What's that here?
Somebody turn Brian up a little bit. We can see you fine, we can't hear you.
Okay. How's that?
That's great. All right, Brian, let's just work through it, okay?
Yes, sir. I've been given less than 15 minutes to get through a couple of key pieces of legislation. I was hoping to go through council today, with council today. Primarily, I was hoping to focus council specifically on the governor's omnibus transportation bills that were recently announced. You haven't seen too much discussion in the paper yet, and a lot of localities are here still trying to figure out what their official position is. However, Norfolk continues to be asked what they think about the governor's omnibus transportation bill. I put some discussion in council's recent memo that went out council packet on Friday, but I want to go through some of the significant provisions specifically to seek council's input and guidance as far as what the city's official position should be moving forward. The only new source of funding revenue unfortunately in the governor's omnibus bills, which is both HB 1248 and Senate Bill 639, which happens to be sponsored by Norfolk's own Senator Wagner. This actually will authorize the Commonwealth Transportation Board to sell naming rights of highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities to private entities that eventually will be contracted via PPTAs for, you know, future expansions out at hopefully different parts around Hampton Roads. The concerning part is any fees generated would not necessarily go to Norfolk specifically, but it would go into a highway fund that's distributed statewide. If you'd like to see these bills, to take a look at them, they're in the memo I referenced on the top of page two. If I could just kind of go through some of the significant provisions of the governor's transportation omnibus that I wanted to point out to council. Over the next eight years, that's fiscal '13 to fiscal year '20, the governor's transportation omnibus plan contemplates increasing from .5% to .75% of the state sales tax revenue that's currently dedicated to transportation. So for the upcoming biennium, if the governor's omnibus bills were to move forward, this would result in about $110 million increase in total transportation funding. And after full implementation, because they're phasing the increase of monies that will be going to transportation over the eight-year period, at full implementation, they would be collecting essentially $300 million that would be siphoned away from general fund and put into transportation. Most of the Democrat members up here in the General Assembly disagree philosophically with any plan to siphon future state general fund dollars away from funding critical general fund-supported programs. In fact, Norfolk City Council has previously, in other sessions, taken a similar position with regard to the Commonwealth's potential use of general fund dollars to fund transportation. Another issue that I want to bring to council's attention on the governor's transportation omnibus is that each year, at least 1% of the general fund revenue growth above 5% would be deposited into a new TTF for construction improvements. Here again, it's a pledge to siphon future state general fund dollars away from the general fund to fund transportation. And to put in perspective, if this were to be current law, 1% of state revenue growth right now would generate about $170 million. And these are, you know, dollars that will typically go to general fund programs that Norfolk and other major urban core cities heavily rely upon. So it really is a fundamental policy question for council to consider. I know that we have a very strong opinion that additional state transportation dollars needs to be found. The policy question is, should it be at the expense of the general fund? Or should we suggest that a new dedicated transportation funding source in the form of a gas tax? Or, as Delegate May has proposed, a tax essentially that you would pay when you fill up your car at the pump? The next concerning provision of the governor's transportation omnibus is that it authorizes, as I was telling you, the sale of the naming rights for these transportation infrastructure facilities. These collected revenues are deposited into an account, but there's no nexus that establishes that these average dollars will be refunded to the hosting jurisdiction. Our preliminary reading is that the omnibus passes, localities may not even have the authority to regulate the placement of billboards or the entitlement to their revenue collection within our own political boundaries, but we're seeking additional clarification on that point. The next concerning provision of the governor's transportation omnibus is that it creates a new Virginia toll authority. This is a statewide authority that would be governed by an 11-member board that are appointed from representatives of Virginia's 11 congressional districts. So here, the concern with this provision, council, is that in Hampton Roads, we already are recognized as a donor region in that our region pays more in transportation tax than we actually receive in transportation funding. So what's to say that a similar thing couldn't occur under this kind of a provision of a statewide tolling authority? The governor has made it pretty clear that tolls and PPTAs are very much a part of Virginia's transportation plans of the future. And the question, the policy question really for council is, how would our interests be best served by a statewide authority in which we would have one or two appointments? Or would it make more sense for these regional tolling authorities to be more regional? In Hampton Roads, as you know, we have higher population densities, we have the bodies of waters that generate the significant revenue potential. And without a better understanding of what exactly is being contemplated, staff has to flag this policy provision as very concerning. And just wanted to bring that one to your attention for further thought. Another provision in the governor's omnibus effectively abolishes the current funding formula that's used for new road construction. This is primary, secondary, and urban roads. The governor's bill substitutes a new formula, and it specifically directs $500 million for bridge repair, high priority projects that are determined by the CTV, interstate and primary road paving, public-private transportation projects, et cetera. What it essentially means, council, is that the state will have the ability to take away dollars that were previously dedicated for local governments, $500 million's worth, and be able to reapply those dollars to determine prioritized projects. So obviously, this is somewhat troubling and concerning for localities that depend and rely upon these dollars to fund their different projects. Another concerning component of the governor's transportation omnibus is that he is really trying to get at local comprehensive plans. And what the bill says specifically is that the local plans will now need to be consistent with the state's six-year transportation plan. This despite the fact that the federal government really does not even acknowledge the state's six-year plan as a planning document. And under the governor's provision, VDOT and the CTV will have the ability to review local plans, submit these suggestions, and then they would actually have the ability to enforce consistency by withholding state transportation dollars if we were not able to comply with what the state's six-year plan is. This measure essentially is shifting central locus of planning decisions from the locality to the state, and it really turns local planning on its head by requiring local planning components to be consistent with the state's transportation language. Language in the bill is weighted, obviously, against planning objectives of localities. And if the bill moves forward prior to any adoption of any local plans, transportation-related components of local plans will have to be reviewed by VDOT, and it's going to probably increase the amount of time of review that's going to be required. And this issue of the CTV withholding us responsible really is something that we want to think about a little bit more closely. For all of these reasons, staff recommends to council that you consider opposing the governor's transportation omnibus bills, HB 1248 and SB 639. I'm led to believe from trusted sources up here in France that the governor and the patrons are open to addressing some of the preliminary raised concerns by the local government lobbyists, including Norfolk's. However, most local governments, their councils haven't really stated their position publicly on the governor's transportation omnibus. And it seems like the intensity of the questions from our delegation, as well as our neighbors in Hampton Roads, led to this being a good opportunity to seek specific direction from council on these bills.
Brian, your recommendation is that we oppose both bills, largely because it's an attack on the general fund for transportation funds.
Yes, sir.
That there's a tolling authority which is contemplated, which may be weighted against the expensive cost of building bridges and roads.
Yes, sir.
And then, the final piece about the shifting of responsibilities to the powers in Richmond, away from the local planning organizations, especially the metropolitan planning organizations.
Yes, sir. Essentially, what's being contemplated here is that if we do not conform our plans to VDOTs, there is provisions in which the CTV can actually withhold transportation dollars to encourage us to conform. And a lot of the, as my understanding, a lot of folks up here is understanding, you know, a lot of our long-range plans really are, in fact, long-range. It takes quite a while to go through the process of developing them. And to have to continually be concerned about updating requirements with the state's six-year plan would prove to be very onerous and time-consuming from the locality's perspective.
Well, I know you're talking with your friends up there. You've just got to believe that you're getting the best advice. I personally don't mind a tolling authority, because it seems to me a tolling authority's going to be cheaper than this last PPTA. But I don't know how the authority's actually going to work. You're reading the language, we're not. So we've just about got to follow your advice.
Feel free to take a look at the language and the links that were provided in the memo to council here in the Friday packet. We've been working pretty closely with Virginia Municipal League, Virginia First Cities, and surrounding Hampton Roads jurisdictions. I'm sitting in Fairfax County's office, actually, and all of the local government lobbyists are flagging these omnibus bills as problematic for their localities. It's just a matter of the different councils weighing the considerations and then determining whether or not they would be supportive. There were a couple of other provisions within the omnibus that really wasn't germane to the discussion here tonight, Mr. Mayor, but all the points that were raised are the seven or eight different concern areas with the legislation as it's currently proposed. And I guess, as your liaison, and given the consideration that Senator Frank Wagner is the patron on the Senate side, he's keenly interested in what council might be thinking about this particular legislation.
How do we answer?
Yeah. What kind of answer to what from?
Do you think it's bad?
Well, I don't think it's all bad. I mean, the governor's, I appreciate the fact that he is trying to address the transportation issues. We've always believed that it needed a dedicated, reliable source of funding for transportation. But I mean, we're just going to have to go with you, right?
Unless it requires us to go, you go sit down with Frank. I mean, if they're in session now, that you go up as the mayor, we discuss it here, and you pick that up. That's my guy. And these guys usually want us in front of them.
And they're down here on the weekends, too. Well, the answer is, we're going to work with you to try to improve this bill, okay? In a way to our satisfaction. Right? And with Senator Wagner.
Yes, sir. I plan to discuss a little bit more about local government education funding, but it seems like council has had a pretty good, fair amount of discussion about what Norfolk Public Schools and the city is facing relating to budget cuts. I will say that in some areas, the governor has been very receptive to a lot of the concern areas that were addressed by Virginia First Cities and a lot of the urban core communities. Additional funding was sourced in some of the at-risk areas that are there. But there are substantial cuts that are coming our way that are across the board, and the changes in the SOQ formula obviously is a concern area. The city continues to work in partnership with Norfolk Public Schools and Virginia First Cities on a series of the budget amendments that's been highlighted in your memo. If there's any specific question council might have about public education, I'd be happy to entertain it.
Hey, Brian, do I need to come up there?
You know, Vice Mayor, we could use your help on the enrollment loss budget amendment that we're advancing. It's for $20 million to protect cities like ours that are experiencing enrollment loss. I believe the calculated total of our potential losses upwards of $3 million without some type of, some kind of mechanism to protect us from our average daily membership losses. I'll keep you posted on that. And we're also making some good progress with the literacy coaches, that those are, you know, priority initiatives for the Virginia First Cities, and a lot of the members up here seem to be sympathetic with that request. I want to remind council that Virginia Municipal League is hosting a Local Government Day on Thursday, February 9th. Councilwoman Angela Williams is planning to attend the day. It should be a valuable opportunity for any council member who may not have had the opportunity to come up to the General Assembly and see how the state legislative process works. So if any council members change their mind, please let me know. I believe Ron Williams is also planning to come up and attend, and we'd be happy to make the accommodation. Last bit before I sign off, council, is we are currently in the throes of a significant discussion on the eminent domain constitutional amendment. It came down to the wire this morning as we did a head count on the Senate side. And thank you very much, Mayor Frame, for your assistance with Senator Northam. I will let you know how the bill shakes out. We pretty much have made our stand on the Senate side with the foregone conclusion that the eminent domain constitutional amendment would move forward in the House despite opposition. Right now, as we speak, the bill is in committee, so as soon as we hang up, I'm going to be running over there to see how we're looking on that piece of legislation. It is still very concerning, but I do want to reassure council that everything that could be done has been done to prevent this constitutional amendment from moving forward. And that's all I have for now, council, unless there's any specific questions on any type of legislation that may be of interest.
Questions?
Brian, there's legislation, I believe, dealing with eminent domain about cities being allowed to actually renovate a house, a building structure, and then recouping those funds.
Yeah, it's a receivership program, councilman, and essentially it allows the city to step in as the receiver and to essentially work with a private contractor to make improvements to the house such that the market value would increase and that the owner would either have the opportunity to buy the house or to pay for the improvements that were made so that the value was increased, so that their hopeful loan situation would be improved, or the house could be sold to market afterwards.
Okay.
That's the legislation being sponsored by Richmond.
All right, Brian.
All right, is that all? I thought I was going to get beat up here.
They're out of trouble.
We're trying to.
Will you tell Senator?
It's tough up here, Mayor. It's a lopsided, super Republican-controlled House, Republican-controlled Senate, and a Republican governor, and they have a different idea about certain policy initiatives.
Brian, we could have done without that. So Brian, tell Senator Wagner I'll be in touch with him, okay?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, council, thanks much.
Okay. Precinct consolidation.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Ms. Stone. Do you have a handout for us? It was, I know that, but did you? I've seen it. Okay. Okay, we're ready. That's okay, you can go ahead. All right? We can watch it on screen.
The precinct consolidation and polling place relocation recommendations were originally presented to you on December 13th. The supplemental information being provided is in response to questions that came up during that December 13th session. Very quickly, I would like to do the consolidation incentives that we have. Since we are banned by Virginia law from purchasing additional voting equipment, our main incentive for consolidation is to reallocate our current inventory of voting equipment in advance of the 2012 presidential election.
Sorry. For those who are looking for it, it's under memos. It's not under our normal agenda. I know some people are looking for the presentation. Sorry.
And this is in order to improve the ratio of voting equipment to registered voters and to provide voting equipment, electronic voting equipment, for the in-person absentee voting for the presidential election. The bottom line is, we do not have enough voting equipment for absentee voting and to be able to conduct the 2012 presidential election for 55 precincts. Through consolidation and careful reallocation, we hope to extend the use of our current voting system through the life of our technical support contract, which has another 10 years on it. Hopefully, by the time we need to purchase the new voting assistance, the General Assembly members will regain their collective senses and accept the fact that in the 21st century, it makes no sense to ban electronic voting equipment. We also want to improve the efficiency of operation because we know that our larger precincts operate more efficiently. We also feel a responsibility to move from private to public facilities whenever it is possible to do so, in order to invest the tax dollars required for ADA compliance into publicly-owned buildings. ADA compliance standards for facilities that serve as a polling place are extremely stringent. Since churches and other private-owned buildings are not required to meet these rigid standards unless they serve as a polling place, the city has traditionally incurred the cost to meet and maintain ADA compliance. We are looking at a timeline for the consolidation plan, which is needed for the 2012 presidential election. If passed by the end of February, this could receive DOJ approval, and the implementation could be in time for the US Senate and House of Representatives' primary election, which we right now are scheduled for June 12th, but could be moved to August because of pending lawsuits. We've had questions about voter notification for all the changes that would be made under this plan. Virginia law requires that each voter whose precinct, polling place, or districts have changed to be notified, officially notified by mail of those changes. A map is included with a new voter card for changes to precincts and polling places. Additionally, the Office of Elections uses the media to increase voter awareness in these changes. We are currently in the notification process for voters in the new Pretlo precinct, as well as voters who are affected by changes in Ocean View Center and Barren Black precincts. In making the recommendation for consolidation, we considered criteria such as number of registered voters, matching districts, and in the case of consolidation, you have to have matching districts in Ward and Super Ward, you cannot split those. The travel distance, private to public facilities, and reallocation of voting equipment. The eight precincts that are submitted for your consideration are all compatible matches that would help us meet the incentive for consolidation. For your discussion, we have provided a supplemental information sheet with updated voter registration statistics. We've provided travel distance for each precinct, and we have addressed other issues raised by the December 13th presidential. We do request that you please remove Stewart from your polling place relocation consideration as we understand from legal that that issue will be resolved with DOJ approval of a previous ordinance. The Electoral Board is present today, and we will try to answer any questions that you may have about the recommendations during your deliberation. Thank you.
Are you going to talk to us about these precinct consolidations again?
If you would like me to go to you.
Well, I don't, yeah, I think the council probably would, because you're going to suggest an ordinance to us, right?
I think that is what today is for, so that the registrar would propose all of these. I think the question for the council today is, which of any of them would you want to go forward with?
Well, I mean, I think we talked about most of the ones we, the one that I don't remember exactly, what we said was the Hunt and Wy and Young Park precincts. I think we said to keep them split.
Yes.
Right.
And also the Valentine being consolidated with Coleman Place, I think that would have a tremendous impact on those voters who have pretty good turnout.
So you're not recommending that?
Which one?
Well, okay. Let's start with Hunt and Wy and Young Park precincts.
Okay. We have presented the criteria for that. It was a recommendation, but the board does recognize that you have other things to consider as part of that decision that we did not consider in our original.
So that's not considered?
Right. Okay. Okay. I mean, is there anybody around here who wants to consider that? We can leave it out. We're not going to combine Hunt and Wy and Young Park precincts. All right?
And then we get something for, it seems like I remember seeing something for the Valentine.
Yeah, that's, we're just going to get to that.
Okay.
You suggested Valentine and Coleman Place, but my sense is that the council does not want to combine those.
But isn't Valentine closed, so where are you guys going to move it to?
The Trinity Church.
Yeah.
And if I might speak to that, in your presentation that I have on my iPad, it suggested that Trinity Church was not ADA accessible. And I understand that it is some portions of ADA accessible, but I also would like to remind for those members of council who were not here 10 years ago, Union Chapel, which is a pretty predominant precinct on St. Julian Avenue, the city spent upwards of $24,000, I believe, to make that precinct accessible. And so my suggestion to benefit the voters who vote at Valentine, that won't be displaced, that whatever we need to do at the Trinity Church to make that accessible, that we do that.
Well, the board does not recommend the Trinity Church for these reasons. First of all, it would not be a consolidation which we're trying very hard to get. Second, it would be moving from a public building to a private building. And third, there are considerable ADA compliance problems with that.
So I just mentioned the fact that, were you the registrar when we did Union Chapel?
Yes. No, I was in the office of elections.
You're in the office, okay. So you know that there is a precedence set. Okay. Now, what I'm saying, one of the most basic planks in the Civil Rights Bill is having being able to vote. While you're not preventing people from voting, what you're going to do, you're going to probably impact the, if you do this, you're going to impact the presidential election and a couple of city council elections coming up, probably to the tune of about 1,200 voters. Now, while you might not recommend it, I think it's up to this council, and I think we just need to, you know, go around, I've talked to Mr. Burford about it, and he recognizes the importance of it. When you change polling places, it takes five years approximately for voters to catch up. It's not like, it's not even like if you decided to change Hunt, where you're three blocks away, there's a tremendous. there's a tremendous distance between Valentine and Coleman Place Elementary.
And to add to that, the precinct already now is, it's confusing. You've got people that live right in Valentine that have to go to Richard Bowden to vote. And the polling place was right there on the street they live on. And you had some of the people in Valentine that have to go to Lafayette Winona to vote. So when you add a third, because you have some people, the people that vote at the, I guess, the school, now they're going over to Coleman Place.
The distance, I can speak to the distance. The distance in these is much less than distance that people travel in other precincts.
No, it's not just the distance. It's the confusion already. You've got these people that live right on Valentine Boulevard that don't vote at the precinct right across the street that they live in.
That's because the Valentine School is in Bowling Park precinct currently. It sits in Bowling Park precinct.
Okay, but the people in Valentine have to go there instead of, they sit right across the street from the polling place and have to bypass a polling place to go over to Richard Bowden to vote. And then you have some people that live on, a little further down from it that, again, they go over to Lafayette Winona. And so now you're saying that, I mean, I would have preferred you to look at that whole area there and came back to simplify it a little more. But I think if you're gonna do anything, it needs to be a Trinity school. Just for the, I know you don't live there, and I know you're trying to do whatever works for you, but in a day, it's about what works for the citizen of the city. And I think the best solution for those citizens is to be right there in their community to be able to vote. You know, and Trinity is right up the street. You know, it's not at Coleman Place. Okay? And that's not just, that is a little further for some of these folk to get to. And somewhat confusing because it's right in the heart of the community.
Is there any prohibition against using a church for a polling? I'm trying to get her answer.
Where no other public building is available.
Then it's permissible.
It is permissible.
Okay. Right now, I think you sense that the council doesn't believe these two precincts. You made a number of suggestions, Russell. There are only two of them that we are not in agreement with. And this is one of them, the Valentine and Coleman Place consolidations.
We did have, we do have a workup from the ADA coordinator for the city on Trinity, which we can pass out to you. There would be considerable expense to making that polling place ADA accessible.
Is Trinity willing to have their church or their school be used for a location? Has the question been asked of them? Paul, do you know?
I don't know, but I don't think it'd be a problem.
I believe we received something that said that Trinity was going. I don't, I just can't remember what it was. But the other thing with that is, if we have these requirements for ADA accessibility and we're looking at trying to work with our minority community in getting them out to vote, and I see that we're looking at a total cost or a minimum total cost of about $24,000.
No, that's just for the entrance. Nothing else was evaluated. So the inside has not been evaluated.
Okay. Is it possible, with all of the builders that we have in this city, to work with some of them to possibly get labor donated?
Well, first of all.
To do something like this?
We don't, I don't know. I mean, can't we, I mean, we have surveyors, we have designers. And you're talking about a ramp. The city could do this. I mean, this is not. But first of all, I think initial question is, we have to find out.
Are they amenable?
Yeah, are they amenable? And if they are, then we're all for it.
If they're not, then why would you not send those folk to Richard Bowden?
Because that's a different, we can't combine those two precincts. We can't combine Valentine and Richard Bowden because they don't have matching districts. And the numbers were too large.
When you say they don't have matching districts, educate me. I don't know.
I don't have, do you have anything else?
Because it's all Ward 3, so I, they don't have matching districts.
And I'm hearing that Valentine School is not a good option because it's actually not in the precinct?
No, it's closed.
But it is our building, so I don't know if it, we're in an attractive location, if opening it just for the purpose of polling was better than investing in ADA compliance. I don't know the answer, but if it's not a good location, we didn't get that answer.
How many consolidations do you have to have to make your equipment work?
We need these and a couple.
We need eight, so if we don't.
Well, these or something equivalent to it. We needed.
If we approve, if we approve six of them, then we're short of operating equipment. That would.
We're, we're less than what we need yet.
But you would be able to hold an elect, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, we got to figure out a way to find eight consolidations. If these two don't work, you know, can we pass the other six and then let them work on?
But they're running out of time because they need to notify the voters on this. So that's why they're doing this.
My question is. The equipment happens to be voting equipment, right? The equipment is the voting equipment.
Right, right.
But you've been holding elections all along with the same amount of equipment, right?
It must be wearing out there or something.
No, we haven't lost, we haven't lost any at all. But we are at a level that we don't have enough to do absentee voting. So we need those machines. Plus, we are coming up on a presidential election where we really do need to be able to have leeway in increasing voting equipment in some of our very large precincts because of the expected change in turnout. We don't have a problem in any other election.
So you still have to, I'm trying to understand, you said the guy in the same district?
I don't have a.
I just, I just wanted, if we're not gonna consolidate Valentine and Coleman Place, are there any other buildings in Valentine? I know you guys have driven around, but there's no other buildings. If Trinity is not ADA compliant, and we have to submit this, there's no other building in Valentine? Isn't that, isn't that where?
Trinity is ADA compliant, but there have to be some alterations. And I'm looking at $24,000. If we spent $24,000 10 years ago at Union Chapel, and then this is in new construction dollars, we're still talking about $24,000. That's not a bad bet. That's not a bad bet.
This isn't all of it, Paul. She said that there's more.
So we don't have to.
They don't know, she doesn't know.
Could somebody tell me why these are not in the same district? Why Valentine, if the people now in Valentine go to Richard Bowden, Richard Bowden, and the people that normally would vote at this school, if you send them over to Richard Bowden, I'm trying to, why is that not in the same district?
I don't, I don't know what it was, whether it was numbers, that it would make the precinct too large. I'm not sure because that was one of them.
But you're trying to consolidate.
But you do have to keep it within.
But Bowling Parks might be, might push it over the 5,000 requirement. It can only have 5,000 voters, registered voters. And there were, Coleman Place only has 1,300 registered voters. So merging it with Valentine keeps it under that number.
That's okay. I am not in favor of merging Coleman Place with Valentine. I'm in favor of exploring all of the options at Trinity, getting total numbers in terms of whatever you might have to do on the interior to make it ADA accessible. That would eliminate the impact of this presidential election coming up if you move it. So it'd impact your election, Mr. Burford, and also Ward 7. Just because you want to make it easier, that's not the issue. We, I'm thinking about voter.
Trinity would be the ideal location.
It doesn't necessarily have to be easy. You get paid for what you do. I'm thinking about voter.
If we do not, if we don't gain consolidation from this.
You got all these other ones you consolidate. You got all these other ones you consolidate. These are only two. So you're gonna, you should be able to, you know, win somewhere down the line.
Can I, I think we know what we want to do. As long, why don't we, first of all, somebody's gotta talk to Trinity to see if they'll let us vote there. And, you know, and if they won't, then we can talk about going back to Valentine. And you're moving 2,600 voters. I mean, that's how many people are in Valentine. You want to take them over to Coleman Place for 1,300. I, I mean, 2,600 is a nice size. It's a nice, I mean, that's a good precinct. And I, and if just looking at Valentine is geographically compact.
Very diverse.
I mean, it's, I mean, why want to take them, you know, further to Coleman Place? We need to, first of all, look at Trinity. And if there's some expense to that, tell the manager, he'll talk to us, and we'll, you know, and we'll, you know, we'll see if we can fix that. If they won't let us use it, then, you know, we will look at what it's gonna cost to keep Valentine open. We've done that at Stewart for some time. Okay?
That would be our preference.
Just to go back to Valentine. Well, okay, then maybe we can talk about that. Let's find that.
That's a big issue.
So if, if, let's just go back, I mean, we can talk to Trinity, but let's, let's just try to figure out, if Valentine's the place, we're just gonna open it just for the election? You know, at a minimum, let's do that one time until, for the next election in November.
The question is, do we got any power there?
We do.
And that's about, the power's still on, even though the building is?
Yes.
Okay, how easy was that?
The gymnasium is still usable at Valentine. So that would be an option.
We weren't gonna consolidate the other one. And you'll just have to work with a fewer, you've got six precincts that you've done away with, right? So, and they all now have equipment, so you're at least further along than you were last time you had an election. Okay, so. All right? Okay. Thank you. You gonna bring, when is your ordinance due?
It looks like it works well if we have it due by February the 28th. I'm not sure whether we think that Trinity is our first best option or Valentine.
I think right now what we do is just stay with Valentine.
Stay with Valentine, okay, okay. So that.
That's where they're used to going? That's where we're?
We'll prepare the ordinance for the six consolidations, accepting the two that we just accepted.
Correct. Okay. Relocation at Cedar Grove.
That is one location I've built at, 5.5 million.
She'll leave with that. She'll leave with that. I'm starting off with that.
I will leave before we get into any discussion. 5.5 million is an extremely rough estimate. It is not, the Public Works Department has not gone through to the pieces of the development and what it will take. It's what square footage of concrete we might need to build the roads to get to it. And there's a lot of things that have not been finalized.
And even, and even the dream number, 2 million, way out of line. We ought to be spending all the expenses we have in the city.
That's what we pay for the, the, the.
You gotta think, you gotta think about people who use public transportation. You can't just think about the people who got cars all the time. Sometimes you had to take a deep breath.
I'm thinking about the budget.
Wait a minute, let's at least hear the presentation.
And I would like to kick off by saying, this is really the South Side Transit Center. It is a very heavily used transit center. It happens to be in Norfolk. So there's a lot of connections coming in and out of this center that then go out to other pieces of the region. So it's a very large commitment, and it's a very large center. And it's on the south side, connecting a lot of different routes. And will be connecting, of course, into our downtown. So I'll start through here, and we'll hopefully get back to the money as we go. Cedar Grove, as you know, was selected in 2008. We did it quickly because we needed to move the transfer center because of things that were happening in the downtown. There have been complaints, and you've discussed them yourselves here, about that center. And we knew that we needed to move on and get something that was much more stable, much more respectful of the people who are using buses, and in a better location. For that reason, a team was put together. We've met multiple times. It had recommendations, it had representatives from the manager's office, the fire department, Hampton Roads Transit, who is here today, Planning Department, Public Works, and Urban Design Associates. So it was a well-versed team in all the dynamics that go into a bus transfer center and into building a urban core. The charge to the team was to identify this permanent location. We knew we wanted to move Cedar Grove Bus Transfer somewhere else. And so we wanted to look at best practices for other municipalities who had had a similar challenge. We also needed to meet HRT's operational needs. And you'll see as we go through it that they have significant operational needs in terms of what actually happens at the transfer center. We looked at some other facilities. This one is in Arlington, in the Sherrlington area. This one's in Durham. Both are constructed. This one's in Cleveland, and this is the rendering of the Cleveland, of the Cleveland Transfer Center. We looked at what characteristics these had. They are orderly in their circulation. People can come there, actually find their bus easily, get to it, make whatever transfer they need to be, need to do, and get out. They are, they have a management presence. People are treated with respect. They know where they're going and can get there easily. They have restrooms and retail, which we do not have at our present station.
Retail in the sense of Cokes?
Vending machine. They have security. We do have security at Cedar Grove, but that has been one of our complaints, one of the complaints we've received. Visibility from the street and adjacent properties, that's, you know, eyes on the center safer in proximity to downtown. Here are the HRT operational needs. And we had a lot of discussion about this because not only is it the number of buses that are needed, the number of routes that will be there, but also the turning radius of the bus and how you get them back into traffic after they've come to the transportation center. So we need about 50 buses per hour in the peak times. Buses converge on Cedar Grove. We need, it is possible for HRT to organize the buses by routes. That is the routes where people are most likely to be transferring between. They can put them closer together within the center. They need 14 bays and four layover spaces. We presently have 10 at Cedar Grove, 10 bays. But the buses there can double stack, and that's unsafe. And we wanted to take that element out in the new transfer center. And we wanted to allow room for expansion. And we learned in one of our most recent meetings that with the construction of the Midtown Tunnel, HRT has a new agreement with VDOT. They will be getting $2 million a year for the next 58 years to increase the number of, the number of buses that are coming from Portsmouth over to Norfolk. They're increasing, they're decreasing the headways. They have only 15-minute headways between buses. So that means that they needed four bays in order to bring all those buses into the transfer center. And that will go on for many years. We looked at multiple sites. We looked at Cedar Grove, but not for very long. And then we looked at other sites that were close to downtown. The Snyder Lot, the Crown Plaza, the Greyhound Station, and several sites along Wood Street. This is Wood Street. And then this Freemason Block site. Here's the different layouts. What we did is the evaluation team came up with the criteria that needed to be looked at for each site. And then each site had a layout, and the team members did an evaluation individually of each of the sites according to the criteria. And then we all got together and discussed how those criteria worked on each one of these sites. After that discussion, which was a long discussion and very involved, we came up with the preferred site. We're calling this the Freemason site. And this is Wood Street. This is the present fire station. This is a gas station. The red dotted lines are the configuration of what the bus transfer center would be. This is Posey Street coming down. This is Posey Street coming down here. It would be extended on down. This is a connection over to Church or Ben Church. And then the bus transfer center lies in this area. And I'll show you. We'll go through the specifics of it. It's in within walking distance of downtown and of light rail. And it does give us some room for expansion. And because it's publicly owned, we could do it faster than some of the other sites, which were not already in our ownership. It provides 14 bays, five layover spaces, a headhouse. And someone asked me what that is. It's a...for this, it's a place where we're going to be having some vending machines, the security and restrooms for the use of the patrons that are here. It is...it has a centralized information area, which is right here. And it has restrooms also for the bus drivers. And I've got a better picture, which I'll show you. So the buses can come in, go through the center. They either come down this way and line up in these bays, or they come down this way and line up in these bays, or they come around and they line up in this bays. And they come back out and they can either go Wood Street out to St. Paul's or over to the east and up Church. So it has a nice circulation pattern. And we would have an information station. Here, this is a better view for you. This is the building that would be fronting on St. Paul's. This is where the buses are coming around and going back out. In this building would be the security, probably the security in the restrooms and the vending over there. It has a view through to the bus transfer center, so it's open. You can see it. That gives some safety, but it also gives the users of the station a view into downtown and where they may well be going. This building right here has a lot of glass in it. It's where the manager for the station and HRT staff person would be sitting. And they can look down, and I'll show you in a minute, they can look down and see all the buses lining up. They keep an eye on...
Anne, is that really a building or is that a shed?
It's a building.
I mean, has it got four sides to it?
Yes, it has four sides to it.
The whole thing does?
And a roof on it.
But that's a building there? That's not a covered...I mean, it's just covered. It's not...
Let me see if I have a...
Yeah, that's just covered. It's not a building.
It has sides to it. It has a...
Where is this in proximity to the fire station?
It's right next to it. It's just south of it. It's where the ABC store is. If you take the ABC store out, it's right that way.
And there's no sides there. That's just like a cover. And then you could...
Well, we had said there is some sides. But, I mean, we can talk our way through...this is the design phase. I mean, this is the design as we're looking at it now. And there may be...there may be other things we want to change. One of the other things we're thinking of is maybe the security should not be in this building, but should be here, so that it is actually out on the platform where the buses This is...let's see, I went back or something. This is how it fits with the existing buildings in the area. So here's the fire station. Here's the gas station. And of course, this is the parking lot. The ABC store right now is right here. And this would be coming in where the ABC store is and then taking more property. In the future, this area right here, when the...in Phase 1, we would build the station and there would be no entrance onto St. Paul's. But in the future, as we wanted to...if we need to have expansion at the bays, we could actually open up this area into St. Paul's and add three bays and five layover spaces. I didn't discuss something that's important. One of the things that we're talking about is putting some fencing down this...the median here, so that people will not be crossing as they presently do, cross into the median of St. Paul's and then over to the downtown side. But actually, they would be coming up...we would improve the pedestrian passage across the street here at Wood Street and have the pedestrians come up and go across Wood.
Anne, just as a thought, the fire station exit from the firehouse exits onto Wood Street.
Yes.
Am I correct? And I think that, have you talked to...and I like where it is. I think this is an appropriate place. Have we cleared that with them and talked to them about the number of buses that will be lined up in front of the exit from the firehouse?
No, they're not in front of the exit on the fire.
Oh, yeah, they are.
Yes, there would be. Because you said they would come out that way.
Three buses come right out.
I think they'd come out...
Right here. You got this here, and there's...
They'll come out to St. Paul, take a left. They come out and take a left. Some of them are going to St. Paul.
Some of them will go this way. That's what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am. It's just something I think we need to consider with them. Just clear it with them. Talk to, you know, the fire department, make sure that they understand what we like to do and that if it affects...
Their operations.
They need perhaps to have a safe lane that gets them out.
And Andy, they've solved that on 43rd Street.
Okay.
Where they actually have a red light in advance of the station as you come down 43rd, because it backed up a lot of traffic.
It's just a thought.
Yeah.
I thought that that was when our committee meeting, that they had consulted with the...
The fire department was present in our meetings. The last two meetings that we had, they were present in. And so they didn't bring that up, but maybe they were...
It's the lawyer in me.
Yeah, it's okay. I think it's an excellent question to ask them. And make sure that we're, you know, as long as we're doing, we got to make sure we've got the...
I just...I mean, Andy, they were stacking up in front of the fire station on 43rd as the guys were trying to get out.
Right.
And they cured that by just putting a red light west of the station. So it wasn't...they didn't get that backup. As soon as they felt like they had an alarm, they turned the red light on and...
That's cool.
They were stopping the buses back here.
One other thing, Anne, just the transfer facility and the one I'm familiar with in Hampton, it's catty-cord from their courthouse. And I've cut through there, and it's a headhouse is what it is. They don't have...and I think this is something that really needs to be cleared with. HRT needs to understand this. I was there midday, and they had nobody in the facility. And it was trashy. The entire headhouse smelled like a head. It smelled like urine. So if HRT is telling us that they are going to do this and they're going to have security there, it should be 24-hour or a majority of the time those buses are running. And if they're going to have people working there, then they should be there doing that work. Because not only did they have nobody in Hampton, that's also in conjunction with their Greyhound Station in Hampton. And there was nobody there that I noticed at that time. Maybe they were on break, maybe they...but I really think, and you really need to have it...you need to have it manned. And a presence shown in that facility and in that place. I know I think it's a great idea co-locating it next to the fire station. But really, let's make sure HRT gets it when it comes to that, please. And it's only because of my own experience, the reason I ask it, because it's easy to say one thing and next thing you know, six months down the road, we don't get it manned and the next thing you know, we have problems.
It's going to be on us to manage. They don't manage Cedar Grove.
They have a manager out there at the busy times.
Yeah, I've been there, and the manager sits in a pickup truck. Yeah, he also takes off, too. Because I went to him one day, he took off. Which is okay. I mean, I understand, he was following the buses back to the garage. But I think that it's mine, and Anne said they were going to man this. They're going to have security in one building, at least now. And then they were going to man it under that kiosk area. So if they're going to man it, they better man it and not do what I've seen in Hampton, which was unmanned and the facility went to pot.
So that is a part of the...have we got that agreement yet?
They've been sitting in our meetings. Do you want to speak?
Ray Ann Russo, been in every meeting. Right now, the policies change at Cedar Grove, where we do have street supervisors, which what you see in trucks. As long as that Cedar Grove facility is operating, we now have full-time street supervisors there all the time. They don't just sit in the truck. They are out along the 10-bay lineup. The intention is to do the same thing there. The last bus out of there is at 2:00 in the morning or so. We wouldn't have any budget after 2:00, the bus is not running. The cooperation with security is in agreement with the city currently at Cedar Grove. Sometimes the city has patrol cars that come in, but they go off on call. We don't have our own transit police force, but we do contract with off-duty Norfolk police officers. The intention here is, as long as it's an operating facility, we will have contracted off-duty police officers on there as well. And a headhouse will be manned by a customer information person. Because of the scale of Cedar Grove, 18 rats, 5,000 people a day, very different than HDC Hampton Transportation Center.
And you're familiar with when I mean there's nobody there.
There's a policy recently that we put in, we pulled out the customer information people. Right. We used to have customer information people. We don't have the resources to man that. The security, such as it is, the three officers that we have full-time in our safety and security. And there is a contingent that we're not responsible for. The Megalos comes there, the Greyhound, they're responsible, that other side of the headhouse.
Who's going to clean it?
Well, it depends who's going to help rebuild the facility and maintain it. To be determined, I guess, Anne. We haven't agreed up with the city.
I mean, you know, I'm concerned about that, because, I mean, you've got your bus shelters that you have now throughout the city. You know, it's...you know, it appears that certain...that they're not being maintained. I mean, whether someone puts graffiti on them or take a lighter and light the plastic on some of them, or, you know, just write on them, the benches or what have you, the trash cans, you know, I could go on. So, I mean, I would just hope that at the end of the day, that this just not...this doesn't become an eyesore. Whatever amount...whatever dollar amount we invest in this facility, that between the agreement between HRT and the city, that we're going to do a better job again in maintaining.
Absolutely. Absolutely, Councilmember. This is going to be a centerpiece of transportation happen in Hampton, Norfolk. And as such, it's a dignified place for our customers to be there all the time. The intention is to maintain that. Well, there won't be formalized shelters because it's an overhead canopy. The setup is going to be like Wart's Corner, the central aisle and slotted bays, and it'll have an overhead canopy. So there won't be the need for shelters. But yes, absolutely, we maintain. We do have a maintenance contract, but it's not good enough for our bus shelters, because they only get out there maybe twice a week, not every day. Trash pickup, of course, every day, but cleaning shelters maybe twice a week.
But we agree that the bus areas that we have on all of our thoroughfares, that should be a place of dignity, too, right?
Absolutely. Again, change policy.
Right.
You're going to see a change if we install our new shelters and make existing inventory shelters that we have. Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Anne.
No, that's all right. This is how the bus transfer facility fits into the St. Paul's plan. Here's the bus transfer facility here. I will say, at the committee, there was a significant discussion about how uses would relate to each other. This is a proposed mixed use here with a parking, multi-level parking garage here. The discussion at the committee, and of course, the fire station, the discussion at the committee was the adjacent use here to the bus station and how we could buffer that use. And I think that's a very good question of how are the uses going to be good neighbors to each other? So we will need to work through that question as we go forward.
And if you got a concern about the buses, what you alluded to earlier, Andy, that orange there is going to be some type of development there as well. So you're further looking at boxing the fire department in there. I thought that was...that you guys had already talked about it. But if that orange represents some form of development there as well in that corner.
Yes, this one is, too.
Right now, but I'm talking about...
Oh, this, these pieces.
No, no, no. Right there on the corner.
Across... Over here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And so, but yeah, I just think that that's just...and we talked...I talked to Frank about that. You know, you...and that's supposed to be a residential building there. You know, you're not going to...I mean, buses coming in and out at 2:00 in the morning in a residential building. I mean, you could try to buffer that as much as you can by having some commercial on the first floor, and if that's a five-story building, it still can absorb that. I mean, that's just...that's just the reality. Those buses make a lot of noise and they're in and out continuously. And we talked about that, how you buffer that.
Right. So we...I mean, there's some additional planning that needs to going on, but this is how it would fit in the St. Paul's plan. And as you know, we need to send our major plans like that to VDOT to review. And our only comment back from VDOT on the St. Paul's plan was that we needed to provide more public transit access to the St. Paul's plan area. So they weren't aware of our putting the bus transfer there, but it's a nice marrying of concerns of people who need to get...come and go places and having availability of buses with the thought that we need to buffer uses. The timeline. The timeline is, you know, partially based upon...it takes about 24 months to construct it. Again, we've not gone and delved into all the deep details of it. I'd say one of the concerns is that we go through a...we have to go through a funding process, because this is not funded as of right now. And as you know, we do the design part of the process, and then we go out with an RFP, and then we do the construction part of the process. So of course, the first step is to get the design funding and then to go ahead and get the construction funding and construct it. So there is not presently money available for this, and we would then need to bring that to you in the CIP or FY13. The design and the construction or the...depending on how the money comes, it's how the timing will...
What would it cost to design it?
It's about $500,000.
$500,000.
That's just an estimate.
That's just a...
Nice, 10%.
10%.
Yes, that's 10% and 5% maybe in the mall, more in the ballpark. Isn't that right? It's 250 to 500, right?
I mean, that...I'm...yes, it is just math. We haven't done the numbers on it, but that's math. And these are the various things that we would have to work our way through. Of course, taking down the ABC building. And one of the other pieces is that this area is...and then right now, parking and in the parking fund, so we need to address that and close the street. So there are also some activities that we need to come to you. These are the activities for the actual construction. The cost is about 5.5 million, extremely rough, very estimate. Have not gone into the details of the cost at all. Potential funding sources would be HRT, grants, and then, of course, the city. HRT has, as they told us at committee, has shrinking...or they told us at a meeting, has shrinking availability of funds from the federal level.
Does your cost estimate also include design costs?
Yes.
You say HRT has federal money available?
No. They have shrinking federal money.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's...you know, that puts another challenge in front of us.
Are you trying to get some kind of action out of this today?
It's one of the two pieces, and I guess we talked about it maybe a month ago. A great job made.
Has she finished, though? Is that it?
I'm not quite done. Let's...I've got...this is looking down...if you were in that...if you were in that center house, looking down the bus bays, you can see this is where the buses are coming in and lining up at the bays or going down, and there's green in the middle. This is the canopy overhead, so when you get off of your bus, you would not get wet. Oh, let me go back. And as the committee discussed, we would have electronic signage. And the committee suggested that we be able to put on that signage how many minutes till the next bus.
Yeah, I thought that was pointed.
Cedar Grove, we talked about timing a little bit earlier. Cedar Grove needs some improvements now. We would work with HRT on making those improvements. But the three major things that need to be addressed at Cedar Grove while we're getting this final lot in place are reinforcing some of the paving, which is taking a beating from all the buses, ensuring that we have full-time security and providing chemical toilets. We do not have toilets there now, and that is one of the issues with that. Our recommendations would be to get through our evaluation team, refine our plans, have you give us feedback that this is where you would like us... plans, have you give us feedback that this is where you would like us to go, include it in the next CIP that would be coming before you, and then incorporate it back into the St. Paul's Plan. And I think that's about us.
Okay. You were going to say?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, the biggest thing is the spot. We've been talking about this for a while, and we all agree that Cedar Grove is not the right place. The second piece is basically, when we start to look at this, we don't want to repeat the mistakes of the past. We just don't want to have pavement in a place where we put buses. So, I'm not saying that it's going to be 5.5 million. I don't know what it's going to be, but it's not going to be something that we can do for a half a million dollars. Because when we talked about this last, the worst I heard were dignity and respect and how we, how we work with people who use, you know, transit. So, again, we need to refine the numbers, but if there were two asks today, is that, is this the right place? And, you know, as we proceed, patience, because I don't know if it's going to take two years, but it won't be six months. So, there are going to be some things we have to do at Cedar Grove, and there are going to have to be some things that we do if this is the preferred site for the council.
Well, I would just chime in and say that I don't know what the cost is, but it is equally as important to get it right, number one. Because at the end of the day, this should be a place, this should be a destination that regardless of you have a vehicle or not, if you choose to use public transportation, regardless of your socioeconomic condition, that this will be a place that all of our citizens will embrace the same way that they are embracing light rail. And so, that's the type of place that you, we need to get to. And so, with that, it has to be, have a sense of place to it. And so, it has to, it has to represent what we're doing in the rest of the city, you know? And from, from, from that destination, whether I'm catching a bus on Virginia Beach Boulevard or Hampton Boulevard, those shelters that they have have to be exemplary as do, the same as this, this hub here. And so, you know, I think that, Commune, I think we've been asking for something that would give our citizens a little more dignity for the last six, six years I know. And so, we're finally getting there. So, I'm not concerned, I just think at the end of the day, this is good for our citizens.
All right, Mark, your question was, does that, do we think it's the right place?
Yes.
We've got...
I agree.
Paul, you think, everybody thinks, all right, we think it's the right place? Okay.
I get it. I think it's great, and I think we need to get there, but I think we have enough on our plate construction-wise right now, if you want to design it and put it on a shelf for four, five years, and I'm all about transit, but we've got a library going up, we've got a courthouse going up, we've got MacArthur Center, MacArthur Memorial being renovated, we've got to work on Riverside Drive. I don't, you know, lots of things we like, we need four schools, we need, we need to rehab Ward's Corner, we got properties in Ocean View that we need to acquire, and we got blight to fight all over this city. And I think it would be irresponsible to spend anywhere near that kind of money on this right now.
I disagree.
I disagree.
Okay, okay, all right, wait, 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 wait. Okay. All right, now, what's your next question? Because I don't agree with you neither.
Okay, well, I guess it's not a question, it's a comment. We will work on numbers to make sure that, first of all, you know, I didn't come to the committee meeting, we, 5.5 never should have been a discussion, that number didn't make it to me. Okay? So, what we have to do is make sure we're giving you the right number. So, I think there's a lot of discussion about something that I'm not comfortable with right now.
Well, I'm just going to add this too, so, I mean, you know, the passenger rail station is costing us three million, okay? Again, we should be approaching this the same way we approach whether it be passenger rail or light rail, okay? This should be, this should not take a backseat because this is an alternative, alternative mode of transportation. And we need to get this right.
Right.
If we expect folk to get out of their cars and use our alternative modes of transportation, this has to be right. You know, we're talking, we're talking about getting people to the light rail, and how are we getting people to the light rail? Buses, okay? And so, we got to get this right. So, I don't believe that this can be put on the shelf. This need a, this is a priority. We got to get people into our downtown, and this helps us do it.
How we can't afford it, I got priorities in my house I can't do, Anthony.
That's why it's called prioritizing, and this is important. A lot of people that been doing this, you look at the, where the people that come to work, the hospitality industry, a lot of people, they work the job there to keep the businesses downtown going, and they deserve to have the same dignity and respect as do light rail or anything else.
I don't disagree with that.
That's just my two cents.
Not about that, not certain financial management.
And our schoolchildren need to have dignity and respect too, to not have ceilings leaking on them when they're trying to learn.
I'd just like to say that, you know, the people who ride buses should not be considered or treated as second-class citizens. That place on Cedar Grove is atrocious. This place gives them, as we've said, a dignified place to train, change buses, it's got facilities for folks to utilize, grab a snack or do whatever, and it treats them like first-class citizens, whether they're able to ride the bus and able to drive a car, or whether they don't have a choice of riding a bus or driving a car. Just because they're on the bus doesn't mean that they should be treated like second classes.
And nobody's arguing...
And I think that this is the first-class treatment. I'm just making a statement. That's what I think.
All right, so what else?
Our boys not get raises.
We're good. I mean, I, let me just say, I mean, what was a temporary facility at Cedar Grove? It's been there for four years, and nobody thought that was going to happen. And, I mean, I really, transit is so important to the city, it's important to everybody. And, you know, I mean, I, I think this is the right location. You know, I know we're going to have to juggle the budget when, you know, when you make the presentation, and we'll see if there, you know, if there's enough support for this when it, when you put out your budget. I mean, I, and I hope you can pull the numbers down, but I think it's important enough that I'm, that I would, you know, if you gave us a good number, that I'd support it.
Grants available, federal government, they have a grant.
There may be lots of ways to bring it.
Can you on HRT shake the tree?
Okay, all right, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, we're almost finished with this.
And I just want to add, I don't want to pit schoolchildren against people who ride buses. HRT, H, HRT, they don't have any responsibility in funding this. They wouldn't have any responsibility.
That's a go right there.
I'm just, I mean, is that normally how it's, I know, I'm just saying, is that normally how, is that normally how it's done with our agreement with them? We have to fund the payment of all of, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
The agreement provides for us to pay the difference between the cost of our services and our pro-rata share of their federal estate grants, so that if, if this was competing for general funding, it would be coming out of our already share. I don't know if this would be something that would be separately granted, and that would be outside of our cost allocation agreement with them.
We can look all over for, for money.
And to help...
Everywhere.
And to help with that, that question is, before today, this didn't exist, so there wasn't anything for us to have a discussion with HRT about in terms of finding grants and funds, whether they dried up or not, we didn't have any, a true project. I guarantee you, you're going to see an increase in bus ridership with this. Guaranteed.
We also got naming rights.
And that brings us... Anthony Burks.
Take some project at Broad Creek and set that on the corner and put that money right there.
There you talk, there, you know, there you, you've been here too long.
I think...
I mean, if it's that important at all, it doesn't come from nowhere, the most important thing that's happening in the city, I, you know, I'm sorry.
I didn't, nobody said that.
Well, that's what they're saying.
No, that's not, what we're saying is he's going to present it in a budget to us.
It's your word.
And as we start to, you know, look at the budget, we'll decide whether it fits or not.
We've been here too long, Barkley.
All right, okay, quick.
This shouldn't take too long or anything. We wanted to give you an update on total maximum daily load. This is a laudable issue that goes about trying to improve the Chesapeake Bay. The federal government had, had been engaged in a lawsuit against them about the Chesapeake Bay, and out of that settlement came a presidential order that established some goals and initiatives for the EPA to place on several of the states that circle the Chesapeake Bay. We have, having to be one of them. We're working with the Commonwealth, with the Department of Conservation Resources on developing a plan that can meet the EPA's requirements. There's a lot of modeling that's going on to try to figure out what are the outputs of all the different sources that go into the Chesapeake Bay, and how can they be improved upon in order to reduce the amount of oxygen, nitrogen, phosphorus that are going into, into the bay. We have, there are certain dates within the process that have to be done, and I've listed those in the presentation, I won't go over all of them, but basically, the big key here is by 2025, we have to meet 100% of the goals that are being established or not totally set yet. And there will be four permits, or three permits, that we will have, a permit lasting every five years that will get us to this 2025. The first permit only requires that you accede to 5% of the total goals. The second one takes you to 40%, and then the third one will take you to the remaining We're working through the HRPDC. They have been designated as the lead agency to help bring together all of the region's membership to work on this program. The region for us goes everywhere from James City County, Williamsburg, all the way down into the South Side and all the counties and cities in between. The Department of Defense is involved in this. NGOs stands for non-governmental agencies, these are the Elizabeth River Project and a number of other agencies, Sierra Club, that are all interested in this process. And we've got an assistant city manager, and the Stormwater Division has many of its engineers working on this. We're also been aided by Kimberly Horn as a consultant working for us on putting together. We are required to turn in an action plan, and the manager signed that today, and it goes in to DCR tomorrow. What we're trying to do is showcase the city's current water quality efforts, and right now, we think that we're doing a lot with the money. You all established some funds that increase each year for stormwater fees, it's about nine dollars a month right now, and we have doubled the amount of money that we put into, out of our CIP each year into this water quality effort. Went from 300,000 just three years ago to 600,000 a year now. We've done a lot, and we think we're almost at 38% of what the final goals will be even today as we speak with that, but we still need to work diligently to get to the 100%. There's a lot of data that's going into this new baseline, and so, a lot of information still needs to be negotiated with DCR and with EPA to make sure that we and they get it right. We're working on a number of strategies with them and how the region can meet its goals. A lot of the thing, the big strategies that we're using is overarching, is the maintenance of our current levels, our street sweeping, our systems maintenance, our beach restoration, our erosion and sediment controls during construction projects, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act that, that we oversee, the improvement to existing administrative and regulatory programs. We may have to do things in terms of permits when people are looking to do construction in the future, may have to change as these regulations become more succinct. Watershed restoration preservation for programs, getting, working with, say, the Elizabeth River Project to restore wetlands, we need to do more of that. Planting more trees is, is one of the things you do in this type of program. Retrofitting our existing stormwater systems and everything to improve them. We have 100 outfalls that go into our rivers in the bay, and we may need to, to make improvements to those as we go forward. Right now, we've got a lot of studies going underway with us and with the region's members. We're in discussions with the Commonwealth and EPA about the computer modeling that they're doing. We're coordinating and getting our, our updates done, and of course, we will be keeping, coming back to you. As I said, this is a long-term project, and so, we'll be having to come back to you a number of times with updates on this project. What are the implications, the bottom line? Right now, the estimates for the whole bay cleanup is somewhere north of, is in a range of anywhere from 1 to 15 billion. Using a Maryland study that had previously been done, trying to project that on some of the things that we might do, we're looking for the city of Norfolk, could be, could be, this is, we're trying to give you the higher end of this, anywhere from 200 to 300 million over the next 17 years. And again, we spend 600,000 dollars a year right now. This 200 and 300,000 isn't just all on the city side, that's projections of what it might cost even the private sector when people go to develop new subdivisions, what they might have to do to, to improve theirs. We're trying to build consensus on, again, on the modeling so we can get better and refined estimates, and we'll be coming back to you with those refined estimates. But it's almost safe to say that going forward, by the time this gets in, we're going to have to be increasing stormwater fees maybe as little as tripling as we go through the next 10, 15 years.
Will we increase our water fees as well? I mean, the water that we sell?
I would hope we do and everything, but they're not...
I know they're not intertwined, I know that, but I'm just saying. May our citizens always got to bend and rut, you know, things.
Okay. Stanley B., I think that you need to consider, part of this is Mason Creek, it is a retention pond basin, it does deal with Chesapeake Bay, it does require cleanup and dredging. Could you make sure that that is, or just keep in mind that is one area, that we, has a huge number of sediment that comes in from the streets into the creek, that's filled it up, it's only about six inches deep? Just keep that in mind as we go along when it comes to funding.
I didn't want to, you're absolutely right, and I do, and we do, haven't forgotten it, and you appreciate it and everything. There's about 15 or 20 different best management practices, they're not just a retention pond being a best management practice, there's a lot of different types, and we're evaluating all those, and we'll be using the models to figure out what are the best ones that will get us the best bang to accomplish the laudable goals of cleaning the bay...
Right.
...while saving our citizens money.
Right, because it still comes within that, and it's just that, please, we need to keep that in mind. I appreciate it.
We haven't forgotten that flooding is a separate, a separate, but a very critical part of...
Part of what's going on every day there. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Can you hold that until next week? And I don't know where Barkley went, I'm sorry Paul left early, I didn't realize he was leaving, but want to go around the room and find out if you have any interest issues? Paul? Anthony?
One, you and I got one, and I forwarded that one on, it was some community, it was Paul and Angela's ward off Newtown Road, lady sent us a letter, I just forwarded, it was some rash and break-ins in the community, and you guys got that letter. It was from Stephanie Peyton.
She forwarded it to you?
Yeah, well, she forwarded it to, I'll see if I can get it. Well, no, you didn't get it.
Uh-uh.
Okay. The, the second thing, the, the shopping center complex on Brampton, right across from Norfolk State University, the community there, given you and Paul, have, they contacted me, they wanted to try to get a meeting or have some resolve as it relates to the issues that continue to plague that area, illicit activity, drug sales and so on and so forth that are taking place throughout that entire shopping center. I think just a few days ago, the air salon on that corner was broken into, and so, the community want to try to get a meeting together with the university, someone from city administration and the various departments to see, or the owner of that shopping center, to try to get some resolve or get a handle on some of the issues that continue to plague that community. And I've been out there, and it is happening. I mean, it's like an open air market, you know, so, and again, this is the one right across from Norfolk State University on Brampton. Okay, that's all I...
Okay, Angel, wait just a second. Barkley, you got something?
Yeah, one thing, one of this issue with the Norfolk State crossing the street, some of us were here when we went through that debacle. I'm in favor of getting all the expertise we can to solve that problem, but I think any improvements on it, they are paid. You know, I, there was a big... You know, I, that was a big, we took a lot of financial as well, as well as emotional and well as verbal abuse, the decision they made, because of that general, so, whatever.
What do you mean solve the problem? Solve the problem, they just need to walk to the light.
Well, I think, whatever, I mean, I'm happy to give them all of our, you know, but I'm just one person, but I, I got a source I can.
I'm with you there.
The, I guess, the only other thing is, we do have to do it when it's coming, in February.
That, I understand it's scheduled soon, I don't know if Lynn Sir has been, yes, cutting out Cottage Line, we've been trying to get up here for some time, do we have a date on that yet, is the question?
I agree.
Okay.
Recipically, I go to, that's all I have.
Okay, Angela?
Steph is number eight, getting issues taken care of, so I'm happy with that. I did have a group of retirees ask me if it was possible, since employees got free ridership on the tide, if we could do something for the retirees as well, since they're on a much more fixed income than the employees.
I will check, I think it's gonna be difficult, but we will get your names.
The school employees have asked you, by the way.
We're working on that.
Okay.
But they just referenced that when we did bonuses for the employees, we didn't do anything for the retirees, and now the retirees, we've given free ridership on the tide for employees, and still again, nothing for the retirees.
Thank you. A couple things, there was a very brief discussion at the last committee meetings that I was on, we talked about the, kind of the redundancy of the two committees that deal more with community education. They used to be one committee, but I think they've been separated in the two, and the, no offense to anybody putting together the presentations, but they, it doesn't seem to be that one of those committees is necessary, the topics aren't as engaging, so I don't know if we can get more out of, put them back together, and this council has to, I guess, discuss that later, but it just seems like maybe it would be an opportunity for some of us to go on some other committees, where it seems like you guys have more fun in economic development. But anyway, I don't, just down the road, when you're looking at restructuring and, you know. The other thing is, I did send a letter to the council, and, you know, it was talked about process when dealing with members that could be perceived as violating, and I would like to get some answers about the two things that I proposed, whether or not that's a route to go with it. And then the final part of it is, when we have citizens who do not understand code law, and we have some citizens who really, I mean, they get upset when the city responds back and says that they didn't violate anything, or that this person has six months on their permit to fix the property. A lot of people, they don't understand the, that property rights, that they, sometimes they have more rights than, you know, the people who live around them. But are there situations, or should we be documenting places that we should be going after legislation to fix it? For example, I'll use this as a very minor example, I had some folks in Bayview very upset that a family painted their house the ugliest green in the world with orange shutters. It is not against any code, but.
Ugly is not a code violation.
Right, but, let's just say, could we change that law? Could there be some things that we could do up at, maybe that was a bad example.
That's a bad example.
How about with?
How about purple?
How about your necktie? How about electrical, maybe electrical work, or how long permits are allowed to be out there, maybe instead of six months, maybe they need to be four months. Yeah, that was a very bad example.
It was.
But there is a house over on Fisherman's, you gotta go look at it. But anyway, I just, you know, I don't like that the, we try to please our citizens, but it really annoys me when staff responds back to them and basically gives the answer that they've been told, I guess they always give, which is, we can't do it, it's not within the law. So then how about we respond and say, you know what, it's not within the law, but we'll make sure that next year it will be, we'll try to propose something, maybe we don't agree with it, but maybe we'll propose something. I just wish it wasn't always, and I've seen some god-awful pictures that constituents send, and the response that comes back from the city is just blah, you know, and they feel like they, they're, they don't understand it, you know? You have to explain it, I, I know Barkley and I, we've explained it all the time in civic leagues, unfortunately they do, but we've got to do a better job with that, or start documenting what these complaints are, and if, maybe we need to change the legislation.
I agree.
David, doesn't?
Okay, one thing, back to transportation. We approved EVMS slash, we've got permission to do some parking on the west end of the Light Rail. Where is that? Now, we move, where are we towards telling people they can park?
John's, John is meeting with them.
We have a meeting with them next week to work out the details, and after that, we'll let people know that the meeting is next week.
That's important.
Well, actually, can I get cut out of the meeting?
Put it on the show.
Well, I did too.
So.
No, I mean, we've been trying to schedule a meeting.
Basically, they said they're, they're amenable to do it and everything, so we thought we'd find out a positive thing, and we didn't think we needed to involve you.
Sandy Harris called me, said that they made agreement, living ahead.
They agreed, we just need to work out the details and.
Yeah, public sector is a big.
Because we had a meeting scheduled, and then their meeting came off, I was just waiting for it to get scheduled again, but, okay. All right, Tommy, you wanted, you wanted an opinion from the city attorney, is that what you wanted?
Right, yes.
Is everybody planning on being here next week, by the way? Because Terry's gonna be here, Barkley's gonna be here. I'd like to do some of these council appointments next week, first thing on the agenda, because I wanted to wait till everybody got here, and I wanted to tell Breck that as well, so we're gonna do all the, try to do as many appointments as possible next week. I mean, it's, it's a two o'clock meeting, right?
It's another work session.
Okay. All right, great, okay, thanks very much.
I'm gonna win it too, I'd be able to make my grand son some basketball game at 6:30.